Just cue this up. So, we have another applicant before you tonight with another request for a brief study session for a hotel project. This is somewhat different than the application we just discussed, or the potential development we just discussed, in that this is an existing application that the city has in process for 120-unit apartment building. It's a current, complete application. The current applicant is looking to parlay this project onto a new developer to take it over. GemCor is here tonight to present their concept with some proposed revisions. The application that was initially submitted to staff was, in our opinion, kind of massive and out of character with what should be on the site. So, this, the letter that we sent asked the applicant to look at some redesign options, and this developer is interested in pursuing that further. But we felt, given the current state of conditions with the state and the new laws we're seeing and the trends that we've been looking at, that it'd be another good opportunity for the council to take a look at what they're presenting and give this applicant feedback as to whether or not we feel they're moving in the right direction with their proposal as well. So, again, no action tonight. This is just advisory and an opportunity for this applicant to get some feed, initial feedback from the policy heads and then work with staff to move their project forward or decide if they want to move forward at this time. So, again, I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them of staff. And Jonathan Amami of GemCor is here to give you a presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and staff and members of the public. My name is Jonathan Amami. I'm the president of GemCor Development Partners. We are a, oh, sorry, that's small up there, so if you can't read, I'll try and recite as much as I can. We're a vertically-integrated developer and general contractor that focuses on the development, construction, and long-term ownership of apartment communities for all income types, whether it be affordable family, affordable senior, mixed income, and market rate. Everything we develop, we build ourselves with our own in-house general contracting company. Because we focus on various income types, we're really focused on building housing that's indistinguishable from, really indistinguishable from market rate or affordable. We do both. We, sorry, getting thrown off there because of that. Because we do both, we're focused on providing quality housing, both for affordable and market rate. Sorry, here we go. I'm just going to go for my slides here because that's really throwing me off the scale there that that is. I need to turn that off, maybe your buddy wants a larger one. That's a little bit better. Okay, so anyways, here's a list of our, anyways. Sorry, this really threw me off here. Okay. So, for this project, we have put together a team of partners, nonprofit resident service provider, Pacific Housing, KGGY Group, which is a nationally-recognized, award-winning architecture group that has worked on no less than 20 projects for us over our portfolio, and FBI Property Management Company, which is the largest by volume in the state of California with over 100,000 units managed, of which 60% of their portfolio is market rate and 40% is affordable. Here's a sample here of some recently-completed developments that we've done, ranging in size from 48 units all the way up to 387 units in size. These are a mix of affordable, affordable mixed income and market rate apartment communities, both family and senior. Everything from podium style with subterranean parking to above-grade parking, as well as structured parking, and three-story walk-up product to four, five, and six-story buildings, some of, the majority of which are here locally in the Bay Area, and then one project as far south as San Diego. Here, I'd like to highlight a project that we have under construction in the city of Livermore. It's comparable to the First and Kern apartment development in that it is also a three-story walk-up type project. It is also in a neighborhood that has complementary scale and size of development. On the south here, off of Vasco Road, there's a highlighted area. We're working on a five-acre parcel of land. We're developing 171 units within a larger master plan community that has a total of 385, I'm sorry, 385 units, both market rate for sale and our rental housing development. Our project there is actually mixed income in nature with a component of affordable, as well as market rate, integrated within one master plan community along the Vasco Ace Train Park and Ride Station there. This is Mediterranean design, three-story walk-up, meaning no elevators, tuck-under parking, meaning it's at-grade private garage parking with two and three levels of residential apartments above. And these are a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Getting into the First and Kern apartment development, as Craig had mentioned, there was an application filed in 2017, one, to secure an RDO allocation for 120 units, and then, two, to pursue an actual development on the site. We actually have been following the project for, I don't know, three years or so, as I know there's been several developers that have pursued apartments on this project. As you probably know, it's general planned as high-density residential with a complementary zoning. It's a vacant parcel with that general plan and zoning, which is not too common. Many of the projects that are worked on today, such as the last one, are redevelopment of existing types and uses, and then recycled and integrated into something else. So, we're thankful that this actually is the blank canvas for the type of project we are proposing. Most recently, we reached out to the city, learning that the prior applicant had decided not to pursue the project. We reviewed the letter that was sent in response to their application, and to us, it was a matter of resubmitting a project that spoke exactly to staff's concerns, I think largely to do with scale and massing. It was a four-story project that was shaped much like the odd T that this site is shaped like, with all four stories coming out on First Street. Looking at that, I don't think that's too complementary to the surrounding neighborhood, much of which is two and three stories in height residential, the higher-density residential being the three stories and the single-family, and then, of course, you have the commercial uses. So, we looked at the design and thought, what is it that we can do to respond to staff's comments? And can we develop something meeting the 120 units that were secured under the RDO and be complementary to the surrounding uses? So, on the right side is a site plan. We worked with our architect, KGGY Group, to put together a site plan that we think addresses some of the concerns, fronting a leasing office and clubhouse on First Street that can mimic commercial use with taller ceilings, storefront glass, and look and feel as though it's some sort of commercial aspect, but it really serves the community that we're building. And then, secured in the back are six individual buildings with surface parking and then interior garages that face to the interior of the parking lot, and then the frontages of the buildings facing with ground floor having pedestrian access and walkability sidewalks, landscaped areas that feel as though they connect to the street instead of raised in the air with parking below, and they're, you know, 10-foot above-grade level. We went ahead and put together some sample elevations. This is not by any means, you know, what we're locked into, but one of the items in staff's response letter had to do with using a mix of materials and not being all one material, such as maybe stucco or siding or some type of stone material. So, we said, well, we can actually integrate, you know, several materials in these elevations. Unfortunately, I'm sorry you can't, you see too well, but we do have a mix of materials being stucco, siding, and stone exterior facade, so we can break up the massing, break up the integration of the design in the building. And then, in the bottom-right corner is a sample elevation of what a commercial style or commercial-looking amenity space could be leasing office and clubhouse for the community. There's a chart that shows the mix that, plus or minus, that we're proposing to meet the 120 units, and then a calculation of the parking that we came up with for this site. In terms of next steps and, you know, timeline moving forward, we understand it to be that there is a open application, that there was an applicant that was representing the seller that chose not to pursue the project in light of the letter that came back from staff. We would like to respond to the staff letter with a site plan that accurately, we feel, addresses the comments and the concern, concerns laid out by staff, and continue on through the design review process such that we could submit for construction documents at a later point, we think this year, and hopefully work towards building, starting construction of 120-unit apartment development on that site. That's more or less where we're at right now. I would like to hear any comments, questions, concerns, and address any of those, please.
Great. Well, thank you, Jonathan, for being here this evening. Appreciate it. Councilmember Tucker.
Thank you. First of all, what was the, you said you're taking it over from the previous. What was the density of the previous? Was it 120?
Exactly, yeah, it was 120.
All right, so, one of my questions is, you mentioned that it's mixed family, market rate, and affordable and senior. Do you have percentages of each of those categories yet?
Sorry, maybe I was, I slipped up a little bit in the beginning of the presentation. Those are the various types of housing that we work on. Yeah, so, we do everything from family, senior, mixed income, and market rate. For this project, we're thinking, in light of the unit mix that we presented there, the one-twos and threes. This is more what we think would be workforce housing-type of project, catering to singles and one-bedrooms, all the way to small families that could occupy a three-bedroom unit.
So, yeah, market rate.
But is this market-rate housing? Because I noticed one of your partners is Pacific Housing, and that is a nonprofit --
Correct.
-- affordable housing organization. So, the question that I think Councilmember Tucker is asking is, is this apartment project market rate, or is it affordable housing?
Affordable housing.
100%.
Correct.
Okay, so, that leads to my next question. So, what we had previous discussed in other projects was, in these types of things, when you have parking issues, I would expect some sort of parking management plan, because often you, in affordable, sometimes you need two or three families, you know, if they're super-low income. It just depends, and you obviously can't discriminate, so, but what you have to do is manage the parking, right?
Sure.
So, I would expect at least a parking management plan. I would expect an onsite, full-time manager to deal with any issues that might come up. And I don't know that, I think that's the right project for that area. I'm just saying, some of the things that we have talked about in the past were some of these types of things to manage, you know, parking overflow and various things. I'm just curious why you say, maybe it's my ignorance, I'm sorry, but why you say you don't need elevators?
Oh, I was just trying to distinguish between higher-density, four-plus-story-type projects, and then lower-density, two- and three-story projects generally don't have elevators. And then, being that these are six individual buildings, they're accessed by stairwells.
So, ADA doesn't come into play? I don't get this.
No, you're, everything's accessible. You have a certain percentage of accessible units on your ground floor.
Okay, that's what I wanted, okay.
So, we meet that percentage of ADA.
So, you'll have a ground floor then?
Absolutely.
Oh, I thought I read that there was parking underneath.
No, oh, yeah, sorry. Maybe I got into too much detail on that. I apologize.
Okay. All right. That's it for now.
Okay. Councilmember Marks.
Well, first of all, I'm glad you scaled it down to three floors.
Yes.
And I like the design. I don't want to see a boxy, you know, apartment complex. I like what you showed us, and I hope it stays similar to that, or even nicer, if you can. I have a question going on with the parking. How many parking spaces are you allowing per unit, or per the one, two, and three bedrooms?
So, on average, what we have here designed is 198 units, so it comes out to 1.65. And the way it works, every unit will get a garage parking space, and then preference will be giving, be given next to two and three-bedroom units, because it's not, you know, a one-bedroom's not going to want, you know, two or three stalls. A two-bedroom may want two stalls. Rarely do we see units that want three stalls. And in terms of parking management, I mean, our, our rules and regulations that we have on parking are very strict. You must have a placard placed if you're in a surface park that's not in a garage. There's no way you can park in somebody else's garage because you have your own remote to park in your garage. If you are found to be parked in the wrong spot, or somebody else's spot, or illegally in a location at or near the perimeter of our project, it doesn't take more than probably an hour, and your car will be towed out of there.
That's on your property, though, right?
Yeah.
What about street parking? Will they, because, let's face it, we know a lot of people own two cars.
Sure.
Just being an individual.
Yeah.
Where would that second car park?
I mean--
Okay, I think I got my answer.
Yeah.
Because we know, all of us know, that some of our apartment complexes in Gilroy are a mess.
Yeah.
With parking everywhere on the streets, and I don't want to see First and Kern, you know, saturated with cars, because the residents really wouldn't appreciate that.
If I can--
Yes, please.
So, I think, when you do the math, you know, we're able to allocate one stall per one-bedroom, and almost two stalls per all two- and three-bedroom units. So, I mean, in my opinion, 1.65 parking stalls per unit in this day and age is a little overparked by many standards and parking studies that we conduct on our developments. There are developments that perhaps are a little closer to transit lines or higher-speed rail lines, such as our development in Livermore, that, in light of their connectivity to those types of transportations, were closer to one-to-one on parking. So, 1.65, I think, is not really in the area that we would have parking problems.
Okay.
But that's based on our portfolio and experience with our management company and--
Okay. One last question. How many guest parking places are available?
So, you know, I'm sorry, we don't have it broken out exactly here. We, there's a formula for the city for guest parking, and we meet that formula. And I'm sorry for not having a specific answer for that, but--
Okay.
--we do meet the allowed, or the required parking for guests.
Okay, but you don't remember what that required?
Yeah. Because this is preliminary, and it's not our official set in stone, here's our application. Our instructions to our architects are, can you put 120 units on the site, as the last applicant did, but can you do it in three stories? And what's the maximum number of parking stalls that you can come up with?
Uh-huh.
So, we kind of left it at that before we knew we were going to go on to next steps.
Okay, because I know that was just a concern, because I know a project just got approved last week with zero. And I'm thinking, oh, my God, you know, the neighborhood is going to be very upset.
We definitely don't have zero, because we want accessibility, not only for guests, but we also want accessibility around our leasing and clubhouse space for prospective tenants to come and view the property and park safely.
Mm-hmm. So, all right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Blankley.
As originally proposed in 2017, do you know if this was an affordable housing project, or is this a change?
I believe it was market rate.
It was market rate before?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, help me understand the, the front of the area along First Street.
Sure.
So, you've got Taco Bell on one side, you've got the Safeway parking lot and the grocery store there on the other, and you're proposing, I thought I saw 3,000 square feet of, of space there.
Yeah, leasing clubhouse amenity space.
Yeah, and so, I'm trying to understand, is that, what exactly is that? Are you leasing that out to the commercial space to anybody, or is it specifically serving your apartment complex?
Correct. It's the latter. It's our leasing office for the development. It's our clubhouse and amenity space for the residents.
Okay.
So, a community kitchen, a play area, a gym, open space, not specifically to this development, because we haven't really designed anything, but oftentimes we'll have gardens, greenery, tot lots for outdoor, sometime, I mean, not here, but sometimes we have swimming pools. In this particular case, we have a nice, open area that we can program to be serving to the development.
Jonathan, have you, have you given any thought, so, this land was originally zoned commercial?
Correct.
And previous council, a few years ago, ended up changing the zoning in part because of, I believe, the housing element.
That's right.
Have, would you, have you given any thought to, to putting some sort of commercial there in the front, and then your apartments in the back?
I have not personally, because we don't build commercial. We're primarily an apartment developer. I don't want to necessarily speak on behalf of the seller, but I know that they've owned this property for a long time, and I think that when the housing element was required to change the uses of, I think it was eight to 10 parcels, something along those lines, and this being one of them, I think originally, they might have had an idea to do some form of commercial, but then it got changed to residential. So, we definitely wouldn't be the candidate to do some type of commercial project, and I'm not sure how the seller would feel about reverting back to something that it already was.
Yeah, and I'm not--
That's just my reading in between the lines and take of kind of the conversation.
Right, no, I'm not saying, you know, that entire site needs to be commercial.
Sure.
But I think, I think it's important for, for everybody to at least acknowledge that we are, we are losing commercial site, commercial property. And so, to the extent that if you were to put some sort of, you know, nice commercial project right there in between Taco Bell and Safeway, and then the rest of your project in the back, that might go a long ways.
Sure.
Just something for you to think about.
Yeah.
Again, the council's not making any decisions here, but, you know, I, I hope you would consider that.
I know the, the broker involved in this transaction said that, you know, if it was, I, I don't want to steal your phrase, but blank canvas to begin with, given that the Taco Bell is there, and, actually, I think, is that, I think that's a car wash. It's a hand car wash there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Coincidentally. So, having the gap in between and trying to connect those two, when we also have egress and dedication for access to enter the site, to get into the back, and then eventually there's access from the Safeway to get all the way across to Kern, it doesn't really present itself, and this is, again, the feedback I've received from him, as an optimal site for retail. If we were talking about the hard corner, I think that would be a conversation worth having, but since we're talking about the middle, which is barely enough for a driveway and parking on one side, and even to keep that driveway as wide as it needs to be for access to Taco Bell, it makes it even more challenging and difficult to meet the parking that we'd like, especially guest parking for the community and parking for leasing. And if we dedicated this as commercial, then we say to ourselves, well, where are we going to put our leasing office, and where are we going to put our amenity space for the development?
Yeah, I mean, I acknowledge that there might have to be some sort of, you probably don't want to hear this, but downsizing of the project a little bit, because now you've got a commercial project up front, and, you know, you might not be able to squeeze in 120 units in the back now.
Sure.
But, you know, maybe you could do, I'm throwing out numbers, maybe 100 units in the back--
Yeah.
--with the commercial in the front.
Yeah.
Just, again, just something to think about, all right?
Yeah.
That's all I'm getting at. And with regards to the, the parking spaces, council, as you guys all know, Caltrans is going through, and the plans have been reviewed, and I think it's, I think we're at 100% now. So, Caltrans will be coming through next year and redoing all of First Street, and there's not going to be parking on First Street, so we cannot have your project spilling over onto First Street, so the parking's going to have to get taken care of onsite.
Sure. Yeah, and, I mean, we're, at this point, I think parked per the requirements of the city, but I'll, I can check with staff to confirm that.
Okay. Anybody else, Councilmember Bracco.
What does the property back up to? What's behind it?
Apartments.
Is it apartments?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, on the parking, that's a bit of my expertise, you will have more than two cars per apartment.
You, sorry.
I handle apartments all over town, and almost every one that has come here and said, they, they had these numbers, were there every day towing cars away because they have a parking problem.
So, is that for one-bedrooms as well as--
Yes.
--like, three-bedrooms, for example?
Yeah, two people live in one bedroom, you've got two cars.
Yeah.
Just kind of--
Yeah, I'm not denying that we're not going to have, like, for example, someone parking in the wrong spot, or not having a placard properly displayed, but, you know, the question was asked, I interpret it as onsite parking, not necessarily who's going to be parking three blocks away so they can, you know, get another car that they just picked up and didn't include it on the lease. I mean, that happens in all types of developments, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Let me, if there's nothing else from the council, let me go ahead and see if, Shauna, you have any yellow cards? All right, last chance. Anybody want to speak on this item? Linda, come on up.
Of the renderings--
Linda, Linda.
I should know this, wouldn't I?
Yeah, this isn't your first rodeo, Linda.
But I've got short-term memory loss, so. Of the renderings that you provided, Santa Clara, Livermore, whatever, were they, they affordable housing, or were they, you know, what kind of, what kind of projects were they?
I can go to the slide and specifically point out, sure. Or maybe we can play, let's guess which one is which.
Ah, let's guess, okay.
So, the, the first two are affordable, family and senior, immediately adjacent to each other. The third one is 100% market rate, which is actually adjacent to 100% affordable, that unfortunately is not listed up here. The fourth one, Camino del Rey, is senior, and then the final one, Cedar Gateway, is affordable.
I see. And have you thought about making more senior housing?
Um--
Then, that would probably eliminate some of the parking problems, wouldn't it?
Linda, Linda.
I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate you coming up here, but you have to address the council--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--and ask the, ask the questions, and then we'll follow up with them.
So, how would I do that? Would I say, can you ask him?
Yeah.
How would I do that?
Just exactly like that.
Can you ask him, have you considered more senior units in that? Because that would eliminate some of your parking problem, I suspect.
And is there any other questions or comments you want to make to the council about this item?
No, just concerned about a more affordable housing in this town. You know, we're talking about aesthetically pleasing projects. It is a bit of a gateway, and I love that Evergreen project. I hope we get more of those, because that's amazing. And I think we just want to keep the, the ambiance of this community and make everything that we now approve a little bit better than the Alexander project, so.
Great. All right.
Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else from the public? All right, Jonathan, come on up. I got a question for you.
Sure.
Have you given any thought to senior projects?
As a matter of fact, you know, we did look at it. For a site like this, it would, it would, I mean, it would be one building, because that's where you would need elevator access for a three-story senior building. We looked at some of the past developments in town, and it seemed that there were a number of senior projects in recent times, so I wasn't sure if that was something that was desired. But, you know, I kind of want to talk about income, because I did hear a little bit prior to tonight's meeting about maybe some concerns about affordable housing, and I earlier mentioned workforce housing, and I like to classify it as that, because when I say the rents, I think many people in the room will not immediately identify those rents with affordable, but the rents that we're talking about here for one, two, and three-bedroom units range from $1,500 a month all the way up to $2,300 a month, which, you know, five years ago, those were market rents until the high increases that we've had in recent times. which, you know, five years ago, those were, uh, market rents until the high increases that we've had, um, in recent times on market rate units. Um, senior housing units are generally all one bedrooms, um, at least for senior affordable. Uh, rarely do you have developments that are, um, mixed with one-twos and, and never threes, uh, generally speaking, for senior. And then, um, so, I don't know, it's, it's, it's a little different. I mean, on, on the, the one side, a senior housing development would be kind of deeper income targeted. And then on the other side, a mix of housing, one, two, and three bedrooms is able to target a wider, wider spectrum of that workforce population, which, a, a site like this located to the amenities that it's located to, I think makes the most sense for one, two, and three bedrooms versus all one bedrooms, uh, you know, 55 and up, what's, it's actually 62 and up now, so. Um, that was kind of my thought process there.
Okay, so Jonathan, um, i- if we're talking about an affordable project, right, 120 units affordable, what categories would you envision filling?
Yeah, so, um, specifically to the categories that are open, uh, for the city of Gilroy, the needs categories, this development would be 10% at 50% of AMI, which I think is 150 some odd units that, a most recent report you put out, was needed to be filled, a- and the rest is at 60% of AMI, um, which is, is a little, uh, unique, or not un- it's, it's, it's interesting, because many cities have a different income targeting, uh, definition than, let's say, a county level or even the state level, HCD. So, here, um, 81% and up is mod, where the tax credit program, 80% is actually mod. So, we're not really able to help fill that category, because there's no financing available for a project that is 81% and up of AMI. So, our project fills the category, which I think is, is, is very low, but then at the state level, you would actually classify that as very low and low. Um, and again, I say, it's, it's kind of the middle of the income population that still meets the requirements for the financing available for these types of developments, um, but is on the higher end of those, uh, minimum requirements.
Okay, so, um, you know, I'm looking at our latest RENA numbers, and, uh, it sounds like you're, you're talking about, uh, as you pointed out, the extremely low or-
No, 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 very low and low, yeah.
Very low category, well, because they, they broke out very low, from what I understand, between, uh, very low and extremely low.
Okay, so we're 50, 10% of the units would be at 50% of AMI?
Oh, okay, so that's very low.
Would be at 60. And, and the ver- the, uh, low income in, in the programs, like the, the tax credit program that we go after, is classified as 60% of area median income, and I, I believe the cutoff might, in, for very low, might include 60%, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, because, because we, we meet our requirements for the low category. Um, we're a little shy on the very low category.
Yeah.
Um, and what you're saying is, there's no financing available for the moderate category.
So, there is, but moderate by definition for that financing that's available is capped at 80% of AMI. And, and moderate by the city's definition is 81% of AMI and above. So, because of that, it's not available, and then furthermore, should we pursue financing, um, for mod, there's something called income averaging that's required. So, for example, if you wanted 20% of your units at 80% of AMI, then you have to target so many units at 30% of AMI. Then you have to kind of scale up 30%, 40%, 50%, such that the entire project averages out at 59.9% of AMI. Which, I, I think, you know, it, it helps in one way, and then, and then goes another in the other direction, so.
Okay. Alrighty, um, council member Marks.
Alright, I read this, I read the packet, I read about your project, and I'm confused. If I'm confused, I know the audience must be confused. Um, I had heard you say moderate.
Yes.
Now I'm hearing low. What is your project?
So, it's 90% of the units by, by the state's definition, at 60% of AMI.
What's AMI?
Area, sorry, area median in- area mea- area median income, yeah. Yeah, county level area median income. And currently, area median income for Santa Clara County, party of, uh, family of four is-
90,000, I think.
It's over, it's, uh, around 110,000.
110,000 annual income.
Going up by a pretty good amount, yeah.
Okay, so 60% of your project is for fam-
90% at 60, and then 10% at 50. So, um, 10% of the units at very low, and 90% of the units at low.
Okay, so, let's go back to the money again, so, to qualify for a low apartment, you would have to be making over 100,000? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, so 100,000 is 100% of area median income, that's what the area median income is for the area. So, when you do the calculations of, like, for example, let's do, let, let's use 100,000 as a number, so, 100,000-
Keep the math simple, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do it, yeah, 100,000 is a family of four, and, and, you know, I could be wrong, and there could be somebody that looks at the notes and says, that guy doesn't know what he's talking about, but I think I'm going to be pretty close to what it is.
Just keep the math simple.
So, 100,000 for a family of four, 50% of that would be $50,000, right? So, no more than 30% of your income can go towards rent. So, if you did 50,000 times 30% divided by 12, tw- for 12 months?
Alright, let me rephrase my question. To be, for me to rent in your apartment complex, what would my annual family income be to qualify?
So, for those rents I described, the 1,500 to 2,300 a month, 1,500 being the lowest one-bedroom, and 2,300 being the highest three-bedroom, um, it, it's a range of around 55,000 to almost 80,000.
Okay, that's the low.
Yes, that's the whole, that's the whole range, I, I wanted to give you the whole range of the project, that, yeah.
50,000 to 70, what did you say?
To, almost 80,000, yeah.
Alright, um, so, some of those families would have some government assistance possible?
Um, not necessarily for those incomes, but, uh, I mean-
Alright, 50 to 80.
Yeah.
So then, very low to low?
Yeah.
Is this project?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So Jonathan, go, go ahead and give those numbers again, if you had 100,000, right, and 50%?
Would be 50,000.
50,000, right.
And then, 30, no more than 30% of your monthly income or annual income, you know, this is an annual scenario, so times 30%, which, divided by 12.
1,000 to 50.
Yeah, so, I know my math's a little off, because the rents are closer to 1,500, but it's within range, I think, so.
I just want to input that, honestly, I, I have friends that get two bedrooms for 2,500, so, I mean, I think that's a reasonable price, 2,300 for a three-bedroom. I mean, I don't know if any of you guys have noticed, trying to look for an apartment these days in, in Gilroy, the rents are high.
I, you know, with where rents have gone, and I heard somebody in the audience say, you know, it's county incomes, and this is data that's, census data that's collected annually, um, and it's in arrears by a couple of years. Uh, so it's, it's outdated by the time it comes out, because it's based on data that was available two to three years ago. And then HUD, at the Housing Urban Development at the federal level, puts out their income limits, and they put out the rents that translate from those income limits. And, you know, we live in a very expensive area, and even affordable housing today, uh, I made the comment, five years ago, it was very close to many market rents. Um, and oftentimes, you know, you have to do a study when you submit your application, that you have at least a 10% discrepancy between your affordable and market rents. So, we will commission a third party to come out, they'll go around the area, they'll, uh, survey the market units, and, I mean, surprisingly, uh, and unfortunately, we exceed those limits by way more than 10%, um, which tells me that the need is just dire and in constant demand, and whether it's the deepest targeted levels or it's the middle that I'm talking about, which is the workforce population that is often overlooked, because there's programs that are tailored towards the deepest level, and then there's programs that are tailored towards more of, uh, uh, the moderate level. But those specifically are more often than not more targeted towards first-time homebuyer programs and, uh, for-sale ownership. Uh, where, you know, rental in the middle areas, you know, I, I haven't really talked about the financing, but this financing is not requiring any third-party subsidy, it's something that we, we are financing 100% by ourself with the use of, uh, the, the tax credit, um, and then, uh, construction financing available. So, we're not seeking any type of special gap financing or subsidy from any local or state programs that are out there. So, I mean, this is-
Okay, we still have a couple more speakers, uh, council member Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Jonathan, so, uh, you've been grilled enough, so I'm not going to ask you any math problems. But, like we talked about earlier with the, the developer before the project, now where you're, where you're talking about is now 152, sort of, the gateway coming to Gilroy from the west side.
Sure.
Right, so obviously, that area has a lot of traffic flow. So, again, I'm going to make the statement of, you know, I, I am in favor of this, obviously, if, if the project is a nice project, you know. Again, um, I think you have an opportunity here, if you decide to move forward, that, you know, given where the location is, that we can really make a, a, a big statement here in Gilroy, that we're bringing in beautiful projects. So, I ask that you, uh, think about that as well. And then, um, one of the things that we've been pounding our staff, year after year, is to make sure you get community input, okay, on this project, in addition to our school district, because obviously, um, the folks that are moving there, there will be children, obviously. And given the, the status that the school district is in, there may be a closure of a school. And so I just want to make sure that there's input from the school district, knowing sort of what, you know, may be coming forward, obviously. So they're, they're well aware of this, and sort of, there's a game plan, obviously, for, um, transportation, whatever it may be. And then, obviously, making sure that you get all our commissions involved, you know, our bike and pad commission, our other commissions, and getting their feedback, because again, I'm going to go back to sort of the, uh, the walkability and sort of the biking in that area, because there are surrounding, um, businesses there that we could take advantage of as well. So, I ask that you please sort of get that feedback as well.
Thank you.
Council member Langley.
Yes, based on the, on the renderings you've shown us, I, I, it's, I think the project's going to look very nice. Thank you for showing us how some of the projects you've done in the past. And just because some things below market doesn't, to me, doesn't suggest anything about how, how it's going to look. I'm wondering though, and this might be a question for staff, can RDOs transfer from the project that was approved in 2017 to this? That's question number one, I'm not done after this, but do we know, or is, are we just assuming?
Stan.
I mean, if we don't know, that's something the applicant should know now, before spending any more money.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, that's a, that's a question that we've been discussing internally, in, in case it comes up. And, um, I don't have a, a full answer at the moment, is the honest answer. The project was found complete based on the, uh, market rate proposal at the time. So, uh, I think tonight, the intent was, and we've received an awful lot of very specific information about the project that we can use as we deliberate internally staff to, uh, be able to bring back to the council, uh, that answer. But, uh, we have to, we have to look at it a little further.
Yeah, if I, if I can add a little bit also, I think our answer probably is that they do transfer, because these RDOs were not issued under any specific conditions of affordability. So, for example, there, there are RDOs that were issued for affordable projects, and if, if that were the case, and then the developer were proposing non-affordable, perhaps those, those RDOs probably would not transfer. But, at least, uh, our initial look at these suggests that the RDOs would still be valid.
Yeah, but, uh, Andy, so, the, the RDOs, though, the council has always set aside certain number of RDOs for affordable, and now this is obviously going to blow past that. Isn't that a policy question for the council?
Uh, I'm not sure it's a policy question, there, it, it's true that there has been, uh, a separate pool for RDO, for affordable projects, that, that is correct. But I think that's an independent question as to whether the RDOs issued to this project, uh, still carry over regardless of the income value. Well, as I said, we, we have to look at it further, though.
But also theoretically, um, if there's enough now out of the affordable pool, would if, just playing devil's advocate, would if there's only 50 and they need 120, then council would have to come forward and say, yes, we'll give them the other remainder?
If it needed new RDOs, yes. And as I said, that's still a bit of an open question, as Stan says, although our preliminary thinking is that the RDOs are still appropriate.
Okay, so you take note of that, that answer? Um, and I ask the question, because as far as the affordable housing goes, I mean, Gilroy, what we've been told is that, when it, I mean, there's all the different levels of below-market housing, we've got, right now, three times the RENA number for low-income housing, and this is going to be 90% low income, something that we've already got, have three times the amount of here. The very low and the moderate is where we are, we have fallen short of the RENA numbers that we've been allocated between 2015 and 2022. So that's where I was going with that. The other comment I wanted to make is, if, if, if commercial does not work out on the project, and it certainly may not, that, the, again, the renderings that you've shown of the leasing office and the, was it a clubhouse? I can't get it to come up on my thing tonight, but I saw it earlier today. I think that was a great solution to keeping something more, um, in line with the appearance along First Street and having the apartments then back against apartments that are already there. My comments, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Jonathan, any final thoughts?
Uh, thoughts or comments, or just whatever?
Well, okay, okay.
Wait, can I just get a clarification, because on the map that I have on, on the screen here, it says four-story. Didn't you start off by saying you've changed that to three-story?
Uh, where does, on the same screen that we're looking at?
Yeah, we're talking about that same in-between the car wash and Taco Bell, I have a, uh, the, it's in the package, and it says four-story. That's what I'm asking. Is it the old plan?
That might be the old project, because there was, there, there were renderings that were, uh, included in the packet that were of the old project, that's not us, yeah. Those were, um, were they all black and white? Uh, ours are the full-color renderings, and the other were the, the other ones, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, final comments, if I can, um, I, you know, because we work, work on all types of housing, and really, I'm not one to distinguish between other, uh, the, one or the other, or try and discriminate between one or the other. And I take that practice towards the design, towards what we build. I'm in it for the long term, I'm not the developer that is coming to town to build something and find the next guy who wants to pay me a big, you know, price to take over the project and run it however they want. At a minimum, the financing requires, uh, after two years of construction, 15 years of ownership, so that's 17 years that, um, I want to be a good neighbor and operator. Um, I think the team that has been assembled here for this project is, uh, proven time and time again, no less than 20 times, as I mentioned earlier, on 20 different projects that we've worked on together. Specifically KTGY with, whether it's market rate or affordable, I mean, every year at every single, uh, state, conference or national, um, recognition, awards, what have you, I mean, they're placing in every single category. Um, and then our property management company, who we rely on heavily, that manages our entire portfolio of more than 5,000 apartment units, because they manage both affordable and market rate, um, they, like us, provide one level of service to that portfolio that I think, again, is indistinguishable between one or the other. So, it's, it's like I said before, it's high-quality housing for everyone, that's what we do, and-
Alright, okay, uh, just lastly, um, Measure A funded, are you receiving any Measure A funding?
No, as I mentioned earlier, and I want to be clear, so, um, specifically what the program, programs are called that we're going after are twofold. This, these are over-the-counter, non-competitive, the tax credit, uh, which is specifically here, the 4% tax credit, um, and then tax-exempt bonds. Uh, one, you apply to the California Tax, uh, Tax Credit Allocation Committee at the state, and then the second is the California Debt Limit Allocation, for what's called multi-family housing revenue bonds that are secured by the property. No local or county subsidy or state subsidy, um, that would, you know, trigger any type of, uh, special-
Okay, good enough, thank you.
... of the project, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jonathan, appreciate you being here.
Thank you all for, uh, for listening in.
So, um, council, uh, we, we heard from this, I do have, um, concerns, because the council has said that we were putting a stop to new- because the council has said that we were putting a stop to new RDO allocations. The original project was one of three projects that was in the pipeline at the time that we did that. Uh, you all will recall the, um, the New Hope Community Church project, right? That was in the pipeline. The North Monterey project that the council just approved, that was in the pipeline, and then this one is that third one. So, um, that project was in the pipeline, that project now wants to sell it to, uh, Jonathan's group, and we're hearing that it is 100% affordable. As I've said earlier, I know that the council has affordable units that are specifically allocated in the RDO. As Councilmember Tucker said, you know, we're, we could potentially go, go past those, those units. So I would like staff to really just try to understand whether, um, we're able to kinda move those, those units around, and, and, uh, I know when a project gets entitled, they usually have like two years to, to pull a permit. Um, obviously, this isn't entitled yet, so I'm just wondering what kind of, what kind of flexibility does the council have? I, you know, from, from my perspective, I wanna give the council some options. And, um, and, uh, other than that, I think it's an, it's an interesting project. But we'll leave it at that, all right? Okay, so, oh, yes.
Go ahead, Marie, you wanna go first?
Are you asking, um, how the council feels about the below-market rate? Are you asking a question of council, or no, cause I couldn't tell?
No, I'm not asking a question of council, I'm asking a question of staff to be able to just go through and, and really understand, um, what it was that the council did, and what can the council do, uh, to your point, which is, you know, the developer needs to know this sooner rather than later, you know, um...
Yeah, I mean, if the RDOs do tran- if they transfer, then they transfer, and then that's fine. If they don't transfer, then that's an issue that the applicant needs to know.
Right, that, that's what I'm trying to...
Okay, but the simple fact, but if they transfer, the fact that it's now being affordable housing does not bother me any, I just, okay.
Okay, I...
Yes.
So, um, we had talked about that that property was previously commercial, and then we, because of our housing element, designated that to be, I, I don't know if it's R3 or R4, but we designated it to be, uh, res- um, for high-density. So, because of that designation, is that what would, if that is the reason that they would not be allowed the RDO, then I think that that's on us. You know what I'm saying? So it, it would, I would want staff to, to look into that, because we're the ones that deci- designated that, I think, two years ago? I don't remember, it was two or three years ago when we did the housing element, but whenever that was, I think Stan knows.
It was more than that.
Was it longer than that?
Yeah.
Okay, at any rate, so I just wanna know, because of our designation, did we hinder that property? That's what I wanna know.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually a very complicated issue, because we did rezone the property, as Councilwoman Tucker mentioned, along with a number of others, and we did that in order to comply with state law for the certification of our housing element. Since that time, there's been additional laws passed. There's SB 35, the Housing Element, the Housing Accountability Act has been strengthened. We've talked about these somewhat in the past. So, um, the issue of whether this property could be reverted to something other than housing would probably be very, very difficult.
Right.
Uh, if not impossible, and would trigger a bunch of cascading changes. And to some degree, I think some of this will come out in the report that staff is working on in connection with the ordinance passed last week. Uh, and in addition, the state is apparently getting stricter on potentially meeting RENA numbers by category. I think, uh, the new governor's message talks about that as well. So there is, there is gonna have, we, we may have to look at ways of regulating affordability by category in a way that we haven't in the past, in order to comply with essentially the new state mandates that are coming down. So it becomes a pretty complex question, I guess is what I'm trying to say, but we will certainly look at it closely.
That basically is all I'm saying, is I want staff to be able to look at this and come back to the council with a clear answer as to where we go.